Good morning. My name is Esther Mannheimer. I'm mayor of the city of Asheville and I'd like to welcome you to the October 23rd, 2025 Agenda Briefing Work Session. All council members and staff are participating virtually. This meeting is intended for discussion purposes only. No formal action or votes will be taken. In addition, no public comment is taken during this meeting. Good morning. My name's Esther Mannheimer. I'm mayor of the city of Asheville and I'd like to welcome you to the October 23rd, 2025 Agenda Briefing Work Session. All council members and staff are participating virtually. This meeting is intended for discussion purposes only. No formal action or votes will be taken. In addition, no public comment is taken during this meeting. The live meeting will be streamed on the city's YouTube channel accessible through the YouTube icon on the city's website or via the live stream. You also have the option to listen to the meeting live via phone by calling 855-925-2801 and entering the meeting code 12067. We have one council member Vice Mayor Antoinette Mosley who may be joining us a little late today. But otherwise, I'm going to introduce everyone and they're going to say a quick hello, council and staff. When I call your name, please unmute yourselves and say hello. Councilmember Bo Hess.
Good morning.
Councilmember Kim Roney.
Good morning.
Councilmember Maggie Olman.
Hey, everybody.
Councilmember Shanika Smith.
Good morning.
Councilmember Sage Turner.
Good morning.
City manager Deborah Campbell.
Good morning.
Assistant City Manager Ben Woody.
Good morning.
Assistant City Manager Jade Dundas.
Good morning, Deborah.
City Attorney Brad Branham.
Good morning.
City Clerk Maggie Burleson.
Good morning.
And now I'll turn it over to our city manager Deborah Campbell.
Thank you, mayor. And again, good morning, everyone. As you know, the council of agenda briefing meetings are principally designed to help you all prepare for your upcoming business meetings. Your next meeting is scheduled on Tuesday, October 28th. And this meeting will start at 5:00 PM and will be held in the council chamber located on the second floor of City Hall. Prior to that meeting, though, you all have a policy, finance, and infrastructure work session meeting scheduled at 3:00. That meeting will be in person in the council chambers also on October 28th. Now, the run of show for today's meeting is as usual, we'll start with the review of items on your business meeting agenda. As I said, on the 28th, Assistant City Manager Ben Woody will review these agenda items. There is only one council work session, which I mentioned earlier, PFI. To review and he will conclude with a review of upcoming items on the eight-week calendar. We don't have any items identified under the other issues and concerns section of this agenda today. And just as a reminder, I'm told that at the conclusion of this meeting, you all have a closed session meeting. I'll now turn it over to Ben Woody to review the first item on this agenda, which is your October 28th business meeting agenda. Ben?
Thank you, Ms. Campbell, and good morning, mayor, members of council. As Deborah alluded to, you have a PFI meeting at 3:00. I'm not going to cover that. Jade will go over that later on in today's agenda. So moving into the regular business meeting agenda, you have a proclamation designating October as Sister Cities Month. Your consent agenda is really primarily consists of contract and agreement renewals. We have a lot of those on this consent agenda. I'm going to cover a few key items that I think are worth highlighting. But if there are any items that I didn't cover and you want to discuss, please just stop me and let me know. So I'm going to jump into that. Items B and C are agreement renewals related to the city's provision of homeless services. So one of these is a renewal with Homer Bound to continue their street outreach program. They've done that for many years now with the city. Or actually, it ratifies that agreement. And then the other agreement is for our Code Purple program that the city has participated in for many years now. And this agreement is with the Trinity United Methodist Church location, which will provide the nightly winter shelter for the Code Purple season. Item D, I want to highlight, this is a contract for really just the continuing maintenance and repairs of our water infrastructure. We've consistently brought these to you in the past year as part of the kind of response and follow-up to Hurricane Helene. This particular contract is for repairs at Bee Tree Dam. Dam is safe. These are just kind of routine repairs and maintenance issues to make some improvements following the damage from Hurricane Helene. You have a previously approved a similar contract for repairs at North Fork. So this is just kind of the continuation of those efforts to make improvement at our dam facilities. Moving down, I'm going to skip a number of items and move down to item I. Item I is a budget amendment that provides for a required payment to ABYSA. Is required by an existing property lease agreement the city has with ABYSA. We are actually in year six of a 12-year lease with that organization. And both the city and ABYSA contribute to a capital improvement fund. And that fund is then used for the upkeep and replacement of the playing surface at the JPL soccer fields. I'm going to skip another, a number of other consent agenda items and move down to item O. This is a, item O is an item that authorizes the city manager to apply for a zero-interest loan from NCDEQ. That loan is eligible for up to 30% of principal forgiveness, which would be great. And what we're using this loan for is to continue our efforts to redesign and eventually construct the needed pre-treatment solutions at North Fork and Bee Tree Water Treatment Facility. And what this loan, but it really does for us, it's going to help us with our cash flow as we enter this design and planning phase for those two facilities and those upgrades. Just want to note to council that we will continue to pursue FEMA grant funding to support what will ultimately be the construction of these two critical resilience improvements for our water system. And then the last item I'm going to cover on consent is item P. And this is a resolution accepting $2.9 million in grant funding from the Tourism Development Authority. And this will support the construction of the Cox Avenue Complete Street Project. That's something we've talked about for a long time. And I know the, I know the businesses on Cox Avenue are really excited about that. And so what we're looking at is this project getting underway in mid-2026, so sometime next year. It'll take about 15 months to complete. Any questions on the consent? Mayor?
I don't have a question, but council, I, in talking with Ben and Brad before this meeting, we removed the last item on consent, which was the removal of Jared Wheatley from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Staff is going to provide you some more information about that. So everyone has the same information. I apologize that that was not provided to you before this moment. So in an effort to allow staff some time to gather information and get it to you, we're going to pull that item off for this meeting.
Esther, will it be on a follow-up agenda?
That would be the intention, yes. Obviously, once council reviews that information, if they have feedback about it, I will be glad to hear it. Or they can also speak with Ben as well.
But we're not assigning it to the next agenda as of now?
It doesn't, it doesn't need to, like in a formal sense, because it's a consent item. So that's not necessary. But it would be, it would be the intention to put it on the next meeting agenda. But again, I wanted to make sure all of council had the same information and make sure everyone doesn't have any questions or concerns before moving forward. So, so let's make that decision as we get a little closer and after that information is provided to you all.
Thank you, mayor. Any other questions or items that you want to discuss from the consent? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to keep moving. We do have a city manager's report scheduled for your meeting. We're going to have our always exciting quarterly capital update with Walter Eer, our interim capital projects manager. He's going to have really kind of two, two parts of this report. What is, he'll give you some updates on kind of our steady state capital projects. But he's also going to include some updates on some of the recovery-based capital projects we're moving forward with as well. So looking forward to that. You have three items, public hearing items on your agenda. The first is an item that's coming from our Community and Economic Development Department. This is an amendment to our CDBG DR Annual Action Plan. I think James Shelton was pretty upfront with council that you will ultimately amend this action plan from time to time, and that's a normal process. This particular amendment has three components to it. The first is it raises the maximum grant amount available from the single-family reconstruction and rehab housing program. As council members, that's a program the state's administering for us. That maximum amount is raising because it is more expensive to do this work in Buncombe County than I guess originally anticipated. So the state and the city are kind of moving that amount up so we can meet the need for these single-family housing rehabs and reconstructions. The second part of this is a decrease in the minimum project award under our Support Services Program for Housing and Economic Security. The action plan requires it for every award, we have, we have to have a minimum and a maximum. In this case, what we found is the minimum at $500,000 is actually too much money for some of our nonprofits to take advantage of and do this good work. So this will reduce that minimum down to $250,000. And I think make the program accessible to more of our nonprofits in the community. And the last amendment is, is just a, a change to an incorrect reference to a federal statute. So it's literally just a change in some of the reference numbers, very transactional. HCD council committee heard this at their meeting on Tuesday of this week, had a great presentation from James Shelton, and they did recommend to council unanimous approval. Item B was an amendment to, that staff initiated to our ADU requirements in the UDO. We are asking that be tabled to your January meeting to give us a little more time to work through some of the issues and concerns that have been raised around that. So that item will be moved to January. And the final public hearing item is item C, which is one council has seen before. This is a conditional zoning that was approved at 767 New Hall Creek Road. And the applicant is proposing some changes to access to the, to the property. We actually covered this at your last agenda briefing and I showed a map and kind of went through it. So this is, I'm not going to do that again, but this proposal is moving forward at your next meeting. Any questions on public hearing items? Councilman Roney.
I know you presented the New Hall Creek last time, but are there any significant changes?
There are not, no. But still, it's still the developers proposing that, that new access directly to New Hall Creek Road and not making the connection up to Sleepy Hollow Drive.
So that's still...
Those points.
The walls or the retention will still deaden the greenway, right?
Yes, correct. Yeah, the, the greenway will still stub at that northern property line to allow that future connectivity.
Thank you for confirming.
Thank you.
Is it, Ben, following up on that, I, I haven't seen a drawing of what, a sort of a side-by-side of the greenway in the old, older, or the original version versus the new. Do you have anything that shows that? I mean, I, I've seen the new, but I don't remember what the...
We definitely have that.
Like, do you know what kind of...
My fingertips, I don't believe there's much variation in the greenway alignment. But I know the planning staff is watching right now, and I'm certain we can provide that information.
You mean, so there's not much change to the greenway in the original plan as there is in this one?
I don't believe so. No, no, I think the greenway is largely unchanged. I hope I'm right about that, but we will confirm.
I can weigh in a little bit, mayor. I just recently reviewed those plans. The proposal, as Ben said, includes a new entrance, a new private drive, which would be off of New Hall Creek Road. That requires a bridge. The greenway, which was already there essentially is in the same alignment. It would at some point cross that bridge as part of a pedestrian access point. It had previously planned to essentially follow roughly the exact same alignment. The only difference is it now has a crossing point over that bridge.
I'll add a little bit too that I did, I was reading through some emails from the Hall Creek neighbors and talking with the development team. And it does sound like there are, they're going to be able to address some of the concerns around. If you've seen it in the emails, like, is this going to create a bottleneck of water? Will there be a dam-like effect? Will there be any changes to the waterway? You know, just in light of Helene, what more can we share around that kind of just impact? And I think the applicant is going to be ready to do that. I was, I was encouraged by some of what I heard, but I just asked them to prepare more information so we'd be able to address that.
Great. Any other questions on the public hearing items? Okay, seeing none. Unfinished business item, you have this from your last meeting. This is the proposed changes of the noise ordinance to increase the number of sound exceedance events from 30 to 50. As Brad mentioned at the last meeting, this requires a second reading. So Brad, I believe the second reading is a majority vote.
That's correct.
Okay, so this is just before you for that vote. Public comment is not taken as part of a second reading. So moving on to new business, or excuse me, I'm sorry, Councilman Roney.
I just wanted to confirm because there are some community conversations happening about the potential for a new, very large venue in our community. Because this is time-bound through the 26th, it may not apply unless we extend it. But I just wanted to have an opportunity to confirm that this is a time-bound temporary decision.
It is. It expires automatically at the end of 2026. And realistically, because bookings for these venues are done so far in advance, if that new venue even is able to open, I don't think there's any possibility they could take advantage of this 2026 allowance.
And is it geographically limited as well to downtown?
It is not.
The, because I thought we had that question come up before when this proposal was floated with regard to the UNC Asheville proposal, and, and we were told it would not apply to that. Not because of a time limitation, but because of geographic restriction.
It, it could be, I don't see why it couldn't be done that way. So it could be limited farther to the CBD district. Brad, do you want to?
This could be the case, mayor, but there were originally two different proposed amendments being considered to the noise ordinance, this one, as well as one that would essentially sort of cut off some of the louder noises at a certain point. I think some of the conversations around that second one was that it would be specific to downtown. So maybe that's what some of the confusion is coming from.
Well, I, I thought we made that inquiry, but it sounds like regardless, since it's limited in time, it will effectively only apply to the, to the one venue that...
It would, and the, the ability to qualify to even have 30 events to begin with is, is a pretty difficult and time-consuming process. So it's not something that's easy to do from a permitting perspective. Okay, moving on to new business items. We did reopen the application process for appointments to the four Helene recovery boards. Let's say that was largely successful. We actually had 30, 37 new applications. So you now have a much bigger pool to draw from and consider these appointments. But again, we do, we'd like to have this at your next meeting and have those appointments made so we can go ahead and start to work on standing up these recovery boards and kind of get them moving. Go ahead, Maggie.
I need a little direction here from council. One of our council members is uncomfortable with, with providing feedback prior to the meeting. And wanted to know what other options might be available and if they can just stay their candidates at the meeting.
I, I think that's totally fine. I think what would be helpful, Maggie, though, however, is if you could put at our desks the, you know, the list that you've received tallied up so that we don't have to try to remember who we, who, you know, who we supported and where the, where, just as a starting place so that we, you know, when we actually vote and select the members, we have, we have that information in front of us.
Okay, thank you.
Great. And then the last item on your business agenda is you have a number of appointments to boards and commissions. These are kind of your steady-state boards and commissions. I know the clerk's office has shared that information, the candidate information with council. And of course, I believe that you'll have a discussion around these appointments at your PFI meeting. But you'll make these decisions in your voting capacity at your regular meeting. Any other questions?
Yeah, council, we're going to, we're going to have, and the vice, this will be the vice mayor's portion of the PFI meeting. But we'll have that at the end of the PFI meeting, going through those boards and commissions. And I, I noticed a bunch of them, there's some reappointments, there's some where we didn't have any applications, there's some where there's recommendations. But I did notice for, be thinking about planning and zoning, because historically, we have interviewed folks for those positions. So I think that just needs to be something on your radar to think about whether we want to do that and, and select some to interview or, or if we're just ready to make an appointment. So just throwing that out there.
I'll toss that. I think interviews would be helpful.
Yeah, and I, and I'm kind of just giving you, giving you a heads up to be ready to think about that conversation when we get to PFI on Tuesday. So you're not, you know, you're not caught off guard with that. Sage, you were saying some.
I said I agree about the interviews. We always learn additional helpful information.
I agree.
I want to make a quick, a quick correction on something I said earlier. I just got a message from our Development Services Director, and he indicated that the Level 3 Sound Exceedance Permit, in fact, is only in the CBD. So, so it would be limited to downtown based on that information from Mr. Metheny.
Oh, good. Okay, I was thinking, I thought we already clarified all this, so I'm glad I didn't misremember.
Yep.
Well, and I, I've been hearing confusion because when you look up the information, it mentions commercial districts too. And so I've had a couple of community members ask this as well. So just tightening all that language for making sure the ordinance is explicit is great.
Yeah, we'll do that. We'll make sure, we'll make sure that's clear certainly Tuesday night. So, thank you. Okay, moving on, I, I think we're going to move over to the council committees section, and I'm going to turn that over to Jade Dundas to review that.
Thank you, Ben. Good morning, mayor, members of council. Jade Dundas, Assistant City Manager. So on Tuesday at 3:00, we'll start with the PFI meeting work, work session. The agenda items on that are the Finance Quarterly Report. And this is a, a report that has been done for a long time, typically in a manager's, manager's report. But I think we're moving it to the PFI in this, in this case, and I think it'll probably live here for some time. And then the city, the item number three or on that agenda is City Council Priorities Quarterly Update. I'll be presenting that, and this is really looking at the recovery goals, priorities, and how they were set and the achievements that we've made up to this point in time. It's in preparing us, it's been pretty impressive. But also want to explain how all of the, there are a lot of contributing resources for how we're being guided through these activities. And then also how we're structuring our work activities to ensure that we're focused and maintaining the vision that council set forth in their priority. So we're going to unpack a lot but try to be as fair and concise as we can to explain how all these things work together and are in alignment. Item four on that agenda is the review of the Infrastructure Recovery Board Work Plan. This will be presented by D Tyrell McGirt. And D Tyrell is our staff liaison for that recovery board. And this is similar to presentations that have been given earlier this week about other recovery boards. But essentially is giving an update on the progress that we've made, the appointees up to this point in time for that board. And then also kind of setting the, the agendas, kind of giving, giving a preview of the agendas in our November kickoff meeting, and then also the, the following meetings and how we're establishing topics for that and really trying to bring council up to speed on how, how much progress we've made on that, on that front. And then, as Ben alluded to earlier, the board appointments are also on this agenda. So there's quite a few board appointments on there, but there will be the opportunity to review and discuss any of those candidates. And that information is attached. We, we will follow up with attaching presentations to the agenda. But the vacancies and the application information is, is on your, on your agenda today. So if there's any questions on those, be happy to answer them. All right, yeah?
Thank you, Jade. And so I will jump down to the review of eight-week agenda items. And this will be our last item since we don't have other items today. So I'm going to highlight three things. At your November meeting, you're going to have an update on the ARPA program. Haven't heard from that in a long time, but there's, there's, there's still some other funds that are out and being, you know, put to use. So we'll have a pretty detailed update on the status of the ARPA program. And hopefully it will show the progress that we've been able to make deploying those funds. January, this is looking pretty far ahead, but just want to remind you, in January of 2026, the county is going to provide a presentation on the 2026 reappraisal process. So as we know, we're in a revaluation year that got delayed because of Helene. So we'll have the county available to you in January to kind of walk through what that looks like and give some information about that process. Then the last item I want to cover, I'm going to jump back up to November. One of my favorite items is at your November 18th meeting, you will hopefully see a contract for a temporary skating rink at the Ashland Avenue Lot adjacent to the Transit Center. So I know a lot of people are going to be excited to see skating downtown Asheville. So that'll be fun. And that concludes my review of the eight-week. Councilman Olman.
Is that also what we often call the Talbert Lot?
Correct, yeah, that's right.
Is there also an update on the redevelopment plans that have been kind of on ice for many years?
I, I don't have one. I don't know that Deborah, Jade, do we can probably follow up with that, though?
We do not.
Okay.
So is that project like off the priority list, or I just feel like I haven't heard anything about it, and it's such an important thing I know we wanted?
Did I hear that the county took some action on it? Or was that an...
No, they have a, they have a project downtown.
They have properties nearby.
Okay, I was getting...
Yeah, we, we can include some information on the, kind of the Talbert Lot and where things are at in the follow-up documents. A good question.
I think it would be helpful to understand on all of the city property that's been acquired for purposes of housing developments or where those projects are, whether it's the Ford Matthews Lot on Biltmore. the property we acquired out near Dever View, the Talbert Lot, that we have the one off of Lester Highway. We have a lot of land that we have land bank that was intended for housing developments. And I know that, I, I know that we have a really incredible opportunity with the housing bond and also with the C D B G D R money to kind of get these off the shelf and moving forward. So that, that's, I'm, I'm looking forward to an exciting conversation about those being re-energized, if you will, especially since you listened to a very thorough report in H C D, which I hope all council gets to hear about the number of housing units we've approved and the, the ones that have not been built tend to be the ones that don't receive any kind of subsidy. And the ones that do get built are affordable housing projects that receive some type of subsidy. So, so, so I would hope that leveraging city-owned land would mean that the project would be more likely to be successful and actually come out of the ground.
Great, thank you. We can, we can provide some information on that. Any other questions, council? I'll turn it back over to Ms. Campbell.
Other than that, if there are any additional questions? Let's see, I don't know, Ben, if you beat Jade's record of 34 minutes.
I feel like he was
I think so. I think so. I don't think you beat it. So thank you all for your time today and look forward to seeing you all on Tuesday.
All right, thanks.
And don't forget, you have a close, you have a closed session and you connect differently.
I think we have to, we have to wait till noon to connect to do that one?
You, you do not. It's, you can go ahead and log into that meeting at any point, Mayor. We'll just need the motion to be made and passed. And then, council, if you need a few minutes to take a break between, we certainly facilitate that. But I believe the, the staff will be ready to meet you in the closed session meeting.
Okay, so we'll do, is Bo making the closed session motion? Are you ready, Bo?
Yes. All right, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
I, I moved that the Asheville City Council go into closed session for the following reasons. One, to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute, Chapters 143-318.11A1. The law that makes the information privileged and confidential is North Carolina General Statute, Chapters 143-318.10E. And two, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee or prospective public officer or employee. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute, Chapters 143-318.11A6.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Maggie, pick one.
Ms. Smith. And Mayor, you know, we'll need a roll call vote on that.
Right, right. Okay, Councilwoman Turner.
Aye.
Okay, Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
And Councilwoman Omen.
Aye.
Councilman Hess.
Aye.
And Councilwoman Omen.
Aye.
Okay, we have a close, close session motion, which has been passed. Um, council, how about 11:45? Is that okay? Okay, all right. And then Maggie B, I'll stay on for a couple of seconds with you. All right.